Good evening and welcome to the January 16, 2018 Olahtha Board of Education meeting. George, you call the role.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Here.
Mr. Shear?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McCune?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
Cool. And would you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get started tonight, we have a small little ceremony we'd like to start with. That is taking the oath of office, the Board of Education, so a swearing in of Mr. Brian Geary, our newly elected, and also Amy Martin and myself. Would you folks join me down here?
In accordance therefore with said Kansas statutes, would Mrs. Amy Martin, Mr. Brent McCune, and Mr. Brian Geary please raise your right hand and after hearing the oath of office respond collectively by saying, "I do." Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of member of the Board of Education Unified School District 233? So help you God.
I do.
Welcome back.
Well, Brian, welcome. We're glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
It's good to have you here. Look forward to some great things. First off, we are going to start with public comments, but our speaker is not here that I know of. So we are going to go right into Dr. Dane's presentation, graduation policy revisions, which we'll see the presentation now, get a chance to ask some questions, and then we'll prove it later in our agenda.
Okay, well, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Mr. Geary, there will be a quiz for you after this with all of the policy changes. So I hope you're taking good notes and you pay attention. Tonight, I actually have three different topics that all kind of happen to roll into the graduation policies. So they may feel very different, but they all do tie into policies. I appreciate that last month I was asked to share a little bit more about this. So I'll go through this, and then at the end, if you have any questions about any of the topics, then we can answer those. So the first one is probably the easiest policy in which I'm proposing a small amendment, and that is on dual-credit college courses. Now, in Olahtha currently, we do not accept college courses that kids would take outside of the scope of dual enrollment courses, which means they cannot just go to KU or Missouri, take a class, and then come back and have it count as a graduation requirement. I've given you the definition there of a dual-credit college course. It is defined as a college credit earned when a high school student is taking a college course for both high school and college credit during the high school day on high school campus taught by a qualified high school teacher. So those are courses that we do allow our students to count towards college credit. They can count that towards college credit, and they will also get that high school credit. So you may ask, why is that? Well, the first piece is we want to ensure that there rigor, there's rigor in those courses that meet our district expectations. The second piece ties to that equality piece in that if those courses count towards graduation, if it goes beyond those 24 hours, it does, those hours do count as a student's high school GPA. And we do have students that are competing with their high school GPAs, and so it leaves some students that opportunity in which they don't, they don't have the opportunity to take those courses. So that's why we currently have this policy that the only college courses that will allow for high school graduation are college courses. So here is where, what I wanted to bring to your attention. So in the BOC Policy 1, number IDDB, the current language was a little misleading in a couple of the bullet points. It left out that dual-credit piece. And so it sort of read in a couple of those bullet points that college courses would count. And so all I'm proposing that we do in this is that we add that wording of through dual enrollment of those dual college courses. So pretty easy. It's not really changing any policy. It's just tweaking it. So, and it actually happened with Mr. Allison coming in us discussing something else. And as he read through it with that new set of eyes, we were like, hey, there are a couple bullets there that are missing that dual enrollment piece. So that's, that's all that those changes are that I'm proposing with that. The second piece that I would like to touch on is early graduation. Now, at the current time, we do allow early graduation. It's handled at the building level, a student-by-student basis. But we really don't have a structured formal process or policy with that. And so what I am proposing is that we have a district application. It's filled at the, filled out at the district level. The building principal does need to sign off with that along with general administration at the district level, just so that we have a peace of mind. We know what's going on with our students, that we can track that data. If there are issues that we need to know about, we, it just allows us to have a little bit more guidance and oversight over that. Again, this is a student-by-student basis. So it's nothing that we're really proposing that we change except having this application form that we think just allows us to better understand the needs of our students. So those would be the proposed changes with early graduation. The last one is one that I'm really excited about. We've heard for several years from KASB, other legislators, that, and we know, we all know the importance of that financial literacy. I really feel like financial literacy is one of those things that we have to be talking about as an essential 21st century skill. It's, it's a soft skill, but really it's something that we know leads to the vitality and a vibrant future of our students. We know that financial illiteracy can lead to high debt. It can lead to a lack of economic opportunities and even an unstable financial future. So with that, what I am proposing is that we move to having our consumer and personal finance course become one of our graduation requirements. So with that, I have on here some topics that we explore in this class. Career and lifestyle management, financial management, risk management, credit and debt, savings and investing, or just a few. With this, here would be the tweak in the graduation requirements. Our students need a total of 24 to graduate. We're not changing that number. What I'm proposing is that we lessen our technology graduation requirement by .5. That was created in 2008 when we didn't have as much technology infused into all of our courses. So I, because we now do have that, my proposal for you is that we take that technology credit down to .5 and that we put in place of that in a life skills graduation requirement, this financial literacy course. I asked the teachers that teach this class to kind of give me some feedback on what they do in the class. And I love this quote that Mallory West said that she shares with the students. She says, "This class is filled with all sorts of stuff that everyone expects you to know how to do, but you've never been taught it until now." And so I think it's really important that we take a step back and we realize we really do need to explicitly teach our students this.
Dr. Dane, if I could real quick.
Yes, please, yeah.
On the technology credit, I think there, it, the way we've titled that makes it a misnomer because folks assume that that's a specific coding class or something like that. It really is not. What it is, is a requirement that students take courses that integrate technology. And again, in 2008 where we were compared to where we are today, we have almost 30 classes that qualify to cover that because what it's, it's asking students to do is analyze, to be able to use technology for research, to be able to do basic word processing. It's, it's really not a standalone tech credit, as I think most of us think about when we hear that term, as much as it is a technology integration. So still half credit there. Those courses will, you know, as we've embedded more and more technology as just a component into so many of those classes, they're meeting that, that half credit through those courses. And this, this allows the personal finance component to be put in place.
Thank you. That's great. So this course is not a new course. We already have this in place. It was updated in August 2016. I shared with you the name of the resource. I think it's important for you to also know that not only is this a class that we teach in our brick and mortar buildings, but we also do have this class online in the eAcademy as well. So this course is already in place. Again, it's not new. It's just something that we're saying we believe needs to be a graduation requirement. So with this, I reached out to the teachers and I asked for them to share, well, what are some of the real life skill activities that you have going on in these courses? And so I have some pictures here, and I wanted to share some of the things. One of the things that they do is a mock interview where students are getting their resumes ready to go for a job, to go for a college interview. And this last year, Farmers Insurance actually came in and interviewed the students. So they got some real live opportunity to go through that. Some of the teachers recorded, and then they went back with the students and gave them feedback. So that was a really nice opportunity to understand what's going on in the real world. You'll see a picture there of students. We have students that compete in personal finance challenges. H&R Block has an online challenge. That's a picture of the Olahtha North team that took second at the Kansas Personal Finance Challenge in Wichita last year on April 17th. So a great job there. One of the things the teacher said, I love this, is she said, "This learning by doing educational approach allows high schoolers to make real-world mistakes without facing real-world consequences." And I absolutely love that. There is a module that they do in which they are an employee that shows up to an HR meeting, and they have to fill out all of the paperwork that you see listed there. And so they actually do practice filling out their I9s, their W4s. They learn about the at-will employee, their driver's license. They see that drug screen authorization form, so they realize how serious this is. You know, great things that I think our students need to be doing there. Here's an example of, along with that, when they go for a new job, figuring out their net pay calculations and payroll withholdings. I remember the first time I saw something like this was when I had my first teaching job. So what a great opportunity when you're a junior or senior in school to really see and understand how all of this works. Another piece here, completing and filing income taxes. What a great opportunity for kids. I think all kids need to have this opportunity to see this and understand what that, that looks like. Here was a great opportunity that another teacher shared with me, the cost of college. So it helps them really see, what do loans look like? Do I need to work when I get through school? Am I going to have an apartment? Do I need to live on campus? Is college really for me? Because $25,000 for one year may not be something that I want to invest in right now. Is it better for me to take another path? So, and I could go on and on the list. There was another one, I love this. One of the teachers does a stock market portfolio. And so throughout the semester, students have the ability to buy and trade actual stocks with fictional money, and then they track that daily. So real-world opportunities in this class, I, I think it's an amazing class. I thought this data was really interesting, and I wanted to share it with you. I polled from 10 through 12th graders over the last four years, how many kids actually take this class? And you can see that we're anywhere from that 7.9 to a little less than 10% of our students. So I think this really awesome class is being underutilized. And as we think about preparing kids for their future, I think this is a huge piece. So at this point, I'd be open to any questions that you have. That dual enrollment, college course work change we talked about, the early graduation, and then a new mandated class. And this would begin for the class of 2020.
Questions or comments for Dr. Dane?
I have a couple.
Sure.
Dr. Dane, will we have to do any hiring in anticipation of, I mean, going from less than 10% of students to all of them?
So that's one of, there are several different teacher credentials that work for this. And so we've already started talking to the high school principals about what this means for that. So potentially, yes. But there are multiple teaching licenses that would fit with this. So we, we have a lot of staff members that, that are certified to do that.
Okay. And then I was also curious about the number of students on a typical year who choose to graduate early. Are we talking handful, a dozen?
Handful, yeah. I would say handful, but that's what we hear about because right now that's kind of just at that, at that building level. And so that's one of the things I like to be able to look at you and say, 10, 12, 20. Right now, we just don't quite have that data to track.
Thank you.
It's not really an option, so there really isn't much discussion, I would assume, about graduating early. I wouldn't think. You're not getting students that are asking about it because we don't really have any written policy that's clear-cut.
Well, exactly. And we, we want to keep them in school. This isn't to open up that we want to have everybody graduate early. The earliest we would allow them to is after that seventh semester. But it just would be nice for us to have a little bit more structure in place with that. But on the flip side, we always have those student-by-student cases. So I'll give you an example of that. Sometimes we have students that have been in the country for a long time, and their families are perhaps moving back to Mexico. And they say, "I want to have my high school diploma before I leave." Well, we wouldn't say to that student, "It has to be that seventh semester." You know, there are always going to be those cases where, where we let families do it, what we feel like is best. But just having a little more structure in place, I think, would be good for us on that.
Good, thank you.
I think there are a couple other advantages. That structural allows to make sure that we've done the appropriate counseling, had those conversations with parents. Will also help us track, why are these students wanting to graduate early? You know, even though it's not very many of them, is it because we don't have course offerings that, that, that they need or those types of options? So right now, it really is, as we started talking about this aspect, it, it, it has been on an individual student basis. But your question of how many, last year, we think we know, but we're not really, we're not really sure because we're not, we don't have that process in place. And I think it'll help those conversations with counselors and administrators as well, with parents and students as they ask those questions to be able to walk them through what this really looks like and kind of here's the, here's the level that you would have to reach in, in your request for this to be considered. So I think it, it will strengthen our opportunity to support those students.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Dane? Awesome job.
Okay, great, thank you.
Looking forward to those changes. Glad to see the financial literacy piece coming aboard too. That's awesome news. Time for public comments. Shannon, if you'd like to read.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the Board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire Board. If a response is appropriate, the President will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the Board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address. I believe we have one at least.
And tonight, we have Tracy Osborne-Ultin, the president of the Overland Park Chamber of Commerce. Step up to our podium, please. It's good to have you here, Tracy.
Good evening, Tracy Osborne-Ultin. I'm the president of the Overland Park Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also a proud patron of the district.
Yes, you are.
Glad to be here this evening. And I'm really here for two distinct purposes. The first one, as many of you know, the Overland Park Chamber celebrated its 50th anniversary this past year. And so that gave us a lot of opportunity to reflect on our history and the success of our region and Johnson County in general. And one of the things that became so immediately apparent as we all were doing our research and looking through minutes from when we were founded back in the 60s and looking through articles, was that the most important thing in the development of Johnson County and our success as a community was really public education. And so we had the thought that as a school board, you probably have a lot of opportunity to listen to criticisms or complaints from this dais. And so we thought it was important to have someone come and address you and simply say thank you to the governing body, to the superintendent, to Dr. Allison, to the educators who are in the classroom, and really everyone who is behind the scenes, whether they are cleaning the classrooms, whether they are providing transportation, whether they're providing healthcare or counsel or food, whatever it is that goes into the education of our children. But to say thank you because we recognize that public education is our number-one economic development tool. And that has been so since the 60s. It continues to be so, and we know that it will continue to be into the future. And so our Board has made workforce development, talent attraction, the number-one priority for us. It has always been there, but it continues to be the kind of conversation that we have with our members really every single day. And it doesn't matter what kind of company we're talking to, whether it's me or my staff team or other members of our Board. If we're talking to a technology company, someone in legal or financial services or retail or hospitality, it doesn't matter. Talent and workforce is a top priority for them, and it continues to be a challenge. And so I was really fascinated by the presentation tonight because we talk with our members about both hard skills and soft skills. And all of those things come into making a complete person who's going to be successful in life. And so we just want to send the message, first of all, thank you. But secondly, our chamber wants to continue to be a good partner with you, and we hope that you'll let us know how we can continue to be that partner as we move forward to make our children successful in business. Secondly, you all may be aware that Overland Park, us as an organization, the Chamber, and Visit OP have been working on a visioning project, and it's getting ready to officially kick off on Tuesday, January 30th. That's at 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the Overland Park Convention Center. And you have a portion of Overland Park within your district. We think it's extremely important that you all participate, that everyone who is a patron of the Olahtha schools or is on staff here participates in this very important visioning process that will really set the stage of who we are as a community for the next 20, 30, or 40 years. And so I've brought information for you all to share. Happy to also provide that digitally so that you can send that out. But this is really an interesting opportunity. Peter Kagayama is a futurist. He'll be speaking for part of that evening, but the rest of the time is really about brainstorming and hearing the thoughts about what kind of community people want to live in so that we can continue to be as competitive as possible. So that's really my purpose in coming tonight, and thank you all for your service. And we appreciate all that you do to make us successful as a region.
Thank you, Tracy. Appreciate you being here and your support.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy, you can come back anytime.
Well, we'll continue with the rest of our agenda. As you know, our agenda is changing starting in January. We're going to have public recognition first, and then also public comments following that. But gosh, here it is January 15th, and we're just nagging now the blocks with an amended agenda. So we're looking forward to February having the, the real thing and the full thing. So proceeding on with the action items that we have. If there's any questions that anyone had or comments about any of those action items? If not...
Just, just the only comment, and this can come out at any time. There's a lot of trips, a lot of student trips and things like this. And we have in the past, we've had an opportunity to kind of talk about the difference between student-driven, paid-for trips versus district-paid-for type of trips. So, Mr. Allison, at some point, maybe that'd be a good opportunity to have a discussion again, just us and the new Board members and also the community, just go back and say, how do we differentiate that? How do we make a determination of things that the district is willing to help pay for? And how do we work with ones where the students and the families all end up paying for these trips?
We will do that.
Good comment, thanks, Rick. Mr. Shear, any other thoughts? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda items numbered 4.01 to 4.22 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Beveridge and a second by, is that Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Joy?
Second by who? Second by you?
A second by Leah.
Okay, that's right. Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Action. Items bids, contracts, and agreements here. Any questions or clarification anybody needs on those items?
Just on a couple.
Mr. Shear?
5.04, let them have the opportunity to just kind of speak about that a little bit more. Have Greg talk about that a little bit more.
Greg, Mr. Greg or John?
I think, or John.
As you can see, we have a significant change order on Summit Trail Middle School. As you recall, Summit Trail is really a site-adapted version of Mission Trail. Initially, we were led to believe if the design didn't change significantly, there'd be no challenges with the approval and issuing of a permit. However, after, when we received our review comments back, we found that there was a different interpretation than we had under Mission Trail for what's called an area separation wall. But the bottom line is it's not necessarily wrong, but it is different than we had previously, a very similar building, and different than our codes consultant had indicated how those walls had to be constructed. They had to be redesigned. They had to have a different type of material procured. Subcontractors had to redo their submittals, so it added approximately 80 days to the schedule. This was already a pretty tight schedule. We've had some hiccups along the way that McCollum-Gordon's been able to work through. But this is a large one. It wasn't just kind of trading things on the schedule. It was literally, we cannot begin, the whole sequence got pushed back. Originally planned on the building being done, and significantly done in February. This is going to add 80 days to that. We'll still open on time. Everything's under control that way. But it still extends that construction schedule that they have to work within and manage. And therefore, that's, that's what causes the change order to McCollum-Gordon.
Thank you, John.
Another, another request on change orders for this. It may be just going forward because again, I know that we, when we have Board meetings, we have the change orders at these individual meetings. Is there a place where it's easy to go back and look what that cumulative change order overall? If there's multiple change orders over different months? To be able to go back and look? Because again, I was noticing this, that, you know, the additional time is 231,000. There was also the change order of 189,000. Without going back to previous meetings, has there been other change orders for Summit Trail? Or is this the...
There are periodically, we report the ones that are under 20,000. We do a cumulative list to the Board. There isn't a set schedule for that. It doesn't occur monthly, but we'd be happy to do a cumulative schedule and bring it to the Board.
That would definitely be helpful for me.
Okay.
Instead of me having to go back and look at some of these previous meetings and agendas and things like that to try to keep a general idea. That'd just help keep me honest as far as I know.
Okay.
That way I'll know what's going on. And maybe we can do that for any of these additional constructions that we're going forward with, that there's change orders, having one place with the schedule of all of these?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments from the Board? If not, I'd look for a motion.
I move to approve items 5.01 through 5.06 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wickliffe and a second by Mr. Geary. Joy?
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
We have two action items, other action items. I'd like to vote on these each separately. 6.01, naming elementary school number 36. I know it's been an awful lot of time and energy researching a name for elementary number 36. Willow Springs was an option. Stone Creek was an option. And it looks like we now have Canyon Creek as an option. So we need to vote on that. And I would look for a motion for naming our number 36 elementary school.
I move to name elementary school number 36 Canyon Creek.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Mr. Wickliffe. Joy?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
And 6.02, Board of Tax Appeals Application for Summit Trail Middle School. Any comments or any thoughts? John? Be good to hear from you on this one.
After I put the mint in my mouth.
There you go.
As you recall, when we do a Board of Tax Appeals application, that does not mean that you have to necessarily use that authority we're applying to the state to gain tax authority, to assist in opening the school, the operating costs related to that. 100% of its operating costs for two years, and then it tails off 90, 75 at 15% intervals. But you will not make that decision until we set the budget for the coming year. As you recall, we didn't use all of our authority that was granted for Olahtha West. That's up to your discretion if you'll use the full authority or not in this vote application.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John.
We figured as soon as we could get it in, we would.
I think that's a great idea.
State and county have plenty of time to process and take a look at this.
In account.
I would look for a motion if there's no other discussion.
Just a point of clarity, so now is not the time we're deciding whether we use the full authority. Okay.
We're just applying for it at this point.
Gotcha.
The application.
I move...
Go ahead.
I move to approve the State Board of Tax Appeals Application for Summit Trail Middle School as presented.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Ms. Felter. Joy?
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
As we look at over, look over future action items, looks like some additional curriculum, conversations, and topics we'll be discussing or presenting. Information, written information, December Head Start Director's Report. Any questions on that? If not, we have the opportunity for board members to make any comments for discussion.
I was just going to actually ask a question about the meeting with the city. Do we have an agenda set for that, or...
Not yet. They'll do the, the city will do the agenda. They're hosting this year.
Okay.
So we'll have people, typically we have presentations, but they do the majority of it.
If you have a particular item you'd like to see on the agenda, we'll be talking about that here toward the end of the month, first part of February. Let me know, and I'll make sure that I inform the city of your request.
Thanks, Joe.
So, topics for discussion?
Topics for discussion, we're there.
Another one that I would like to have at least a little bit of information about is just our technology plan, where we're at with that as far as rolling out the laptops at the high school. Again, I think we're getting close, and remind me on these dates, but weren't we coming up to the point where we were supposed to be getting ready to go into some of the other high schools? But we're still working through some opportunities and challenges with...
That topic is, we'll probably look at for March.
Okay.
We're still in the process of working through confirming network capacity and some other aspects, so I would anticipate by March, we'd be able to give you an update at that point.
Have we been communicating this out to the teachers and staff and students, the delay in what we're trying to get done at this point?
We did communicate with the next two high schools in line that we were going to delay. As you all discussed, we wanted to take a look at West, see what challenges we had had at that point in time. As part of that discussion, we've also began to look at our network infrastructure, is our current system, what we need to be able to move forward as we think on expanding one-to-one to all the high schools and continuing, as well as an opportunity for us to take a look at some devices. There are some new devices that have come on the market since we made the MacBook decision, and to give us an opportunity to review those as well, to see if that's, if that's the iOS and in the, how we want to move forward. So lots of work behind the scenes going on at this point in time, but I think we're getting closer to having some topics ready for discussion and to bring the board up to speed on where we are and where we think we'll be moving in the future.
John, will that also include what we're doing with the iPads at the middle school and the middle school, some updates on how we're progressing with that, how we're continuing to move on with those?
Yeah, and it may be for this topic, we'll look at splitting between two meetings. We can talk secondary at one and then turn around and high school at one and turn around and be able to talk about the iPads as we move forward. It's good, it's good timing for us as we prepare to move the one-to-one at the high school level to, we've learned quite a bit from our experiences this fall, so we want to make sure that it's a seamless and positive experience moving forward for our students, our staff, and our parents. So we just want to make sure we're doing our due diligence before we continue to lay out a long-term vision and plan for us. So this will be good timing. We should, we should be ready to be able to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Shear. You have thoughts, comments? See none, Superintendent comments?
All right, I just have one, other than very thankful we had a PD play-in for today. And this wasn't a scheduled regular day. But January is School Board Recognition Month, and it's my honor to recognize the seven of you on behalf of our teachers, our students, our administrators, and our community in general. Until somebody actually sits in your seat, they have absolutely no comprehension of the amount of time it takes to be a volunteer. And I think when I talk to community members, sometimes they're shocked that your compensation is zero. It's the opportunity to spend countless evenings in board meetings, at school events, supporting our students and our staff, as well as just the preparation time before every board meeting. As we work down through those, every one of those agenda items has extensive backup material that you go through to ask those questions and to be prepared to make the best decisions possible for our community. So thank you. At your table, you'll see that there's just a small token of our appreciation. Of course, it's got Olathe Public Schools on it, so you can't escape us, even when we give you a small gift. I would ask, if you don't mind, for you all to come down front. I do have a certificate for you, but we'd also like to get a picture of all of you as a, and again, to be able to say thank you for everything you do on behalf of our students and our community.
Okay, cool.
You gonna go? Get him, though. Come on, you're a kid. I know, it's funny. Stay with him.
Okay, you don't want to make a pair of jeans. So, one time, Santa's gonna be fried.
This has a, this has a question.
From the waist up.
This is School Board Recognition. That concludes my remarks.
Well, that would lead us to executive session, and we need...
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes?
We just thought it was gonna be...
Should we put this back here? Is that 25 after 7? Does somebody that's gonna read?
Who's it gonna be?
I'll read it, if you promise me I don't have to read it for 12 years.
No promises, Mr. Beveridge?
You need that in writing.
To move that the board goes into executive session to discuss personnel pursuant to non-elected personnel exemptions under coma, consultation with an attorney for the body or agency related to matters in litigation pursuant to the exception for matters which would deem privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma, and that the board return to regular meeting at 7:25 in this room.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Beveridge and a second by Mr. Wickliff. Joy?
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Move to approve the pending settlement involving minor TD.
Second.
Hold on, hold on, please.
I have a motion by Mr. Wickliff and a second by Mr. Shear.
To approve pending settlement involving...
Minor TD.
TD. Okay. Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
We will adjourn in the upstairs boardroom. We are returning back from our executive session, and we have two motions that we would like to go through here this evening. Look for a motion.
Move to deny the request for a change of placement on the district's salary schedule.
I have a motion by Mr. Wickliff. Do I have a...
Second.
A second by Ms. Martin? Joy?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
No.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Move to approve the pending settlement involving minor TD.
Second.
Hold on, hold on, please.
I have a motion by Mr. Wickliff and a second by Mr. Shear.
To approve pending settlement involving...
Minor TD.
TD. Okay. Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
And we now have no other business. We are adjourned. And we now have no other business. We are adjourned.